Michael, or Justin, did any of the Planning Board members note that they would not be attending tonight?
No, no one indicated that to us.
I see Owen is in the list of attendees. I'm promoting him right now. And I will keep an eye out for anybody else who shows up.
Okay. Do we have a quorum? I'm looking. One, two. I don't think we have a quorum quite yet.
Well, let me see.
Oh, yes, Mr. Quinn. I'm sorry. Yes, we do.
Yep.
Yeah, Quinn O'Donnell McGowan. Wilson Cohen. All right, well, let's just give it a couple of minutes, okay, and then I will.
I know we're expecting Mia as well.
Yes.
Tim, is that Westminster behind you?
No, it's Green Hall.
Oh, it's, oh, it's alma mater. I'm sorry.
On TCNJ, what are you doing?
I thought you were doing a neighborhood landmark, but you're doing your alma mater. I got you.
Yes, correct.
Looks beautiful at night.
It does, doesn't it? They really did a good job with the rest. I haven't been in inside in many years, but they did a nice job with, with really the whole campus.
Yeah.
I wish there was more variation in the architecture. Everything is, they said, oh, people love Green Hall. Let's build everything to look like Green Hall, which, they really stayed with the theme. Yeah, exactly. Oh, there's Jeffrey.
Hello, hi, everyone.
We have a quorum? What's our quorum number?
It's five, and we, we have a quorum. We have had a quorum since 7:30. Exactly. Okay. Since it's 7:33, I'm going to go ahead and get us started, call the meeting to order, and read the opening statement. Our chairwoman, Wanda Gunning, is indisposed still, and so as vice chair, I'm going to step in and chair tonight's meeting. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the ninth day of September 2020. Notice that this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, Choose the Planning tab to view. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet on topics and the times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the eighth day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website. And will be maintained throughout the year. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Please note, as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware that this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the bottom center of your Zoom screen, or if you're participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not for the board will be muted. If you're having difficulty accessing this feature, use the Q and A dialogue box for assistance. Council President and Planning Board Member David Cohen is hosting the meeting tonight, and he will manage the moving of meeting participants back and forth between participant mode and the other mode.
Attendee, attendee mode.
Thank you very much. Justin Lescow, may we have a roll call, please?
Julie Capazoli. David Cohen.
Here.
Alvin McGowan.
Here.
Jeffrey Oakman.
Here.
Owen O'Donnell.
Here.
Tim Quinn.
Here.
Mia Sax.
Here.
Deanna Tech Zarni.
Ah, here, perfect timing.
Luis Wilson.
Here.
Phil Chow. And Wanda Gunning.
Okay. This is the announcements portion of the meeting. Does anyone have announcements for the board or for the public?
No staff announcements.
And also, David, so, Michael?
I just wanted to mention that on Saturday morning, October 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., there will be a special council meeting to receive public input on the Franklin Avenue Affordable Housing. And so, we're really encouraging members of the public to attend the meeting. They will be able to see concepts from various members of the community, ideas that they have for principles that should govern the design of the site, and they'll have an opportunity to comment on what they see. So, for those who are interested in making a presentation, there are instructions on the municipal website. Also, we're forming a task force. It will include a few members of the public that work on an ongoing basis to develop these design guidelines. So, again, go to the municipal website. It's a, it's a featured announcement. And you can get more information about how to sign up for either of those roles.
Right, and just to be very clear, this is a very preliminary step in putting together some concepts for design guidelines. So, it's a design exercise at the very start of the design process for this thing.
Good, that's, that's great to know. I noticed that Princeton Future is promoting it as well.
Yeah, a question. Oh, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. Like, as Planning Board members, I know that we weren't really allowed to participate in a Princeton Future event because of conflict. Are we allowed to participate in these committees or in the preliminary design session?
Guess that's a question for Jerry.
Yeah, I think so. That Princeton Future session, as I recall, dealt with a specific application. That was the problem here in terms of, now, this is really kind of a legislative process, and so, board members can participate.
And this is a municipal event, is it not?
It's a council meeting. It's actually, it's a, it's a, it's a real council meeting, a formal council meeting, presided over by the mayor. So, if Planning Board members can attend a council meeting, which I assume they can, they can attend this. In terms of participating in the, in the committees and the task force in on, I doubt, I, that, I, that I don't think would be possible because eventually, there will be a product that will come out of that that will go before the Planning Board. But the, the council meeting on October 3rd is for various people. It's open to any community member who wants to present.
All right, thanks.
Great. Any other announcements? Okay. Next on the agenda is a resolution for Christ Congregation Church. This is a minor site plan with variance regarding signage. The address is 50 Walnut Lane, block 23.02, lot 19. File number P 2020-833 PM. Are there any questions or comments about this resolution? Seeing none, would someone like to move it?
Done, moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Good, thank you. Next up, we have a hearing. This is Princeton Public Schools' conditional use Princeton High School improvements on Moore Street, block 23.01, lots 1, 4, 6, 7, 9, 15, 31, 32, and 33. File P 2020-884-CO. Michael, you want to get us started here?
Yes, thank you very much.
Michael, before you get started.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, Jerry.
I always forget this, too.
Did you ever review affidavit of service and publication?
Yes, yes.
It looks in order?
Yes.
Okay, so, proof of publication and service are in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Do I need to be, I'm just introduced, do I need to be sworn in?
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth.
I do.
So, it's one or affirmed.
Thank you.
If you could just say your full name for the record.
Certainly, Michael La Place, Planning Director, Princeton. Before this evening, the first hearing on our agenda is, the Board of Education is here to discuss renovations and expansion of Princeton High School. The high school campus is located in the R3 residence zone of the former borough, and in that zone, schools are conditional use. So, before you is, what's going to be presented to you is, is a discussion of how it touches on the different concerns and issues that it has to talk about in terms of a project under conditional use review. So, Justin worked on the memo, and I'm going to have Justin actually walk through some of the highlights of the review of this project. And then, the applicant, our friends at the Board of Education, will be making a presentation as well.
Justin, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So, it's one or affirmed.
Thank you. As Michael said, the Board of Education is bringing this forward for a conditional use application. The public school is a conditional use in the R3 district, and the Board of Education is looking to expand upon that with this addition and improvements. The improvements include an 820-square-foot bathroom and storage facility near the athletic track and tennis courts, an accessible pathway around that building, and construction of an addition to the main building. That addition would include four classrooms on the second floor over the existing building footprint, plus a new stairway and elevator adjacent to the existing building, so slightly expanding the footprint to access those four classrooms. Additionally, they're seeking to expand and deepen an existing retention basin to manage the water flow and help with some occasional flooding. The applicant states that the additional classrooms will be used to reduce class sizes, and there will be no change to the number of students served or building occupants anticipated. A little background on this, on the high school. The Board of Education prepared a long-range facilities plan in 2018 and brought it before the Planning Board. They're required to do that every five years. And they, they included, among many other things, they included generally these projects. I say generally, and these are in the comments, is that the bathroom and storage building was listed as a concession stand in that long-range facilities plan and in recent permits that we've received to the Building Department. However, the Board of Education representatives have said that it's not to be used as a concession stand, so just to clear that up before it's approved. They also state that there will be no anticipated change to students or staff in the building, but at the same time, state that class sizes will be smaller. So, if they could just clear up how that would happen without additional staff. Other than that, on that background, the long-range facilities plan was adopted by this body in 2018. Thank you.
Just, just to add to what Justin said, in addition to the main purpose of the hearing, which is the application for conditional use approval, there's also a courtesy review of the site plan under the courtesy review provisions in the Municipal Land Use Law. Now, they're not bound by anything that the board requests, if the board chooses to request anything, but they should give it reasonable consideration. And this is, so this is a combined hearing on those two subjects.
Mr. Muller, if I may, as to, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you.
Go ahead, thank you.
I apologize because it was to that issue. My name is Kevin Sheen. I'm an attorney with Parker McKay, and we're the attorneys for the Princeton Public School District. In 2018, we had filed an application with the Department of Education seeking authorization to go out to a bond referendum for improvements to the high school and other facilities within the district. Including, included within that application were these improvements and others to the, to the high school itself. In 2018, we filed our documentation with the Planning Board seeking its courtesy review that Mr. Muller just referred to regarding the site plan. And, and then we also submitted the long-range facility plans.
Okay.
At that time in 2018, the board did review the site plan and submitted comments to the Department of Education, which was required before it would authorize the, before it would authorize the referendum.
Okay, thank you on that, then. So, this will just be on the conditional use application?
Correct, thank you. So, then, after, after you submit your comments, the Department of Education authorized the bond referendum. It went out to voters, and it was approved. And then, when a school project is approved by the DOE for a bond referendum, and also retains jurisdiction over the site plan, and it approved, subsequently approved the site plan. As Mr. La Place and Mr. Lescow had said, this property is in the R3 zoning district. Public schools are permitted as a conditional use in the R3 zoning district. The standards that apply to public schools are that the proposed structures, the accessible, readily accessible for fire and police protection, and that the proposed located, the proposed use shall be of such size, location, and character in general harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district, and that it not significantly impact the environmental, environment in.
I'm not hearing Kevin.
I'm not either. He froze on my.
Yeah.
I think he's stuck. Kevin?
Any, any technical wizard who can indicate?
Maybe if, yeah.
I think that this is a problem on his end.
Yeah.
Usually, if he exits and comes back in, it may solve the problem. I don't know if he can hear me, but that's my suggestion.
Can someone else on the Board of Ed team get, get in touch with him?
Could also help if he, well, there is.
Looks like he heard me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he's logging back in.
Funny, all this time and all this way, we've come with technology, and still ends up you have to turn it off and turn it back on again.
Let's just be thankful that that works.
Isn't that the truth?
David, can you tell whether he's coming back in?
There's, he's not appeared in the attendees list. I'm watching it carefully.
Thank you.
So, given Kevin's difficulty, we can continue until he rejoins us, if you would like.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Scott Downey.
Introduce yourself and this swearing and everything.
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So, it's one or affirmed. Please state your full name and your last name.
Scott Downey. I'm an architect and principal with the Spiesa Group, where the architects working with the Princeton schools. Also, with us today is Jim Winkowski. Jim, you want to swear in and?
Yes, if you could raise your right hand. I don't, on the screen?
Yes.
I'm just going to mention.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Phone caller, and I think it might be Kevin, so I'm going to.
This person. That looks like Kevin's number. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Again, Jim, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do. Jim Winkowski, professional engineer, CMI associates.
Right, and that's W I N C K O, W S K I?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Muller, it's Kevin Sheen. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I apologize. I got my internet dying.
Mr. Sheen, we have, in your absence, sworn in Mr. Downey and Mr. Winkowski. And so, I guess I will leave it to the three of you to figure out whether we want to resume with Mr. Sheen or move on to Architect and Engineer. What do you think?
We can move on to the Architect and Engineer. Mr. Downey has the plans on his screen and was prepared to testify, and I was just asking if he'd be sworn in so that we can move forward.
Right, yeah, he was sworn while you were.
Yep.
Okay.
So, Mr. Downey can move forward to give a summary of the project, please.
Sure. So, real quickly, just to touch, touch on the prior visit in 2018. As, as Kevin indicated, we did submit the projects and the long-range plan at that time. At that time, the district enrollment was at 3769, and the projections that were submitted with the long-range plan showed that that enrollment could rise to anywhere between 4,091 and 4,298. The challenge the district was facing was that the capacity of their buildings was about 3473. So, between the low end of the projection and that capacity number, there was a deficit of roughly 600 seats potentially that they would have to provide for. So, the district's long-range plan at the time included upgrades to the elementary schools. It included grade realignment and the creation of a 5-6 school. It included the realignment and renovation of the middle school, and it included a substantial addition at the high school. Now, those projects have, for the most part, been implemented or were part of the referendum with, with two very large exceptions. The 5-6 school did not get advanced by the Board of Education, and the substantial addition to the high school did not get advanced in the referendum by the Board of Education. So, the high school project that we are talking about this evening is a small component of that larger project that was proposed at that time. So, with that overview, am I in a position to share my screen?
Yes.
Okay, I will bring up some drawings here, and so, Jim, do you want to walk us through the site plan?
Mr. Winkowski, are you on mute?
Jim, you're muted.
I'm here, sorry about that. Okay, so what you hear, see before you right now is an aerial view of the high school. North is to the left of the plan. The football field is north of the high school, and along the top of your plan is Walnut.
Mark that virtually as Exhibit A1. Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Okay, so on the plan, you can see in dark black line work, there's three project areas. One is the, the expansion of the existing high school. Basically, as was mentioned before, it's, it's a second-floor addition to the existing high school. There's one change and a minor increase in footprint area of the high school, which is for a stairwell and an elevator. It's about 800 square feet, plus or minus. Scott, you can correct me. That's where that's, that's showing up, that, I would say.
Right here.
East, yeah, thank, the cursor's right over right now. And then, across from that, by the football field, between the tennis courts and the football field, that's where a new bathroom and storage facility is proposed. It's about, again, 825 square feet, plus or minus. There, it's currently a grass area now. There is a paved walkway that leads you from the tennis courts, which sits higher up in elevation and brings you around to the, to the track. That walkway is being rerouted around the proposed building, and then, there's new water and service proposed for that building. Water's coming from the water main in Walnut, and sewer is being provided via a little small pump station unit that's tied into a manhole that's behind the, where Scott shows him his cursor now, on Moore Street. There's a, that's a vacant lot, actually. That's actually owned by the district, where there's words, where there's sewer. And then, lastly, there's a detention basin, existing detention basin next to the parking lot along Walnut. That basin is currently, is going to be expanded to increase storage volume. The, the history behind this, this improvement really goes back to just to, to, to work to a, address a flooding problem that has been continuously, continuously occurring along Walnut between Westminster and the high school. There's several basins, and there's two basins on the property now. Most of the flow, from the drainage from the site, I would say from the eastern and southern portion of the site flows directly to a basin that's right across from Westminster. I don't know, Scott, if you can show that. You had down a little bit.
Right in this, right in this area here?
Yeah, no, down a little bit more, next.
Oh, you're talking about by the high school, yes, sir.
That's a basin right there, and basically, all the flow is pretty much directed directly into that basin now. So, we're, we're doing some pipe work to intercept the flow that goes directly to that basin and putting it into our expanded basin, so it detains first there before discharging to that lower basin. Plus, with the additional storage volume, it mitigates the, you know, additional footprint area created with the expansion of the, the main high school building and the restroom. So, the, that basin improvement kind of serves two purposes. One is to mitigate the increase in runoff from those two site improvements, and to also provide some additional storage on site for, for stormwater that's been a nuisance along Walnut name, Walnut Lane between Westminster and, and the high school. So, those are basically the elements of the project that are before you tonight.
And Jim, did the project go before the Delaware Burton Canal Commission?
Yes, sir, and we received approval from them. I believe the staff report was submitted to the, to Princeton. And I don't know, I don't know if we sent it in, but we do actually have a formal letter from the, from the Canal Commission Board approving the project.
Thanks.
I can forward that if they don't have it. The district doesn't have, the municipality doesn't have it.
So, a little closer look at what Jim was describing. The addition to the high school occurs here. This is an existing one-story wing that we're building over top of to create a second story and adding four classrooms. The stair and elevator is shaded in green here, and occurs at this existing knuckle in the building. Fire access around the building is provided by this fire lane, which is existing now and which will remain and not be impacted by this project. So, the existing access is maintained. The, the bathroom and storage building is right here by the football field. There is an existing structure approximately here, which is a shed structure that has been there for some time. Not sure when it was installed exactly, but it provides a housing for the irrigation system that has been in place at the school. And then, this is the retention basin that, that Jim had referenced here. A little closer view, just over 800 square feet. This is the restroom and storage building, which consists of several spaces. There are three individual restrooms. There are only one or two events at the, at the high school stadium that require more bathrooms than that, and the district will bring in Portage Johns, as they have in the past, to augment these three bathrooms when needed. There is storage here. The main purpose of this building was bathrooms and the provision of water, which has been an issue at the field. So, they don't have access to ice. They don't have access to water for the student athletes, both of which will be provided within this building. So, there is a drinking fountain on the outside. There is water access inside. There is a sink, and there is an ice maker that will be located in the building. Now, there is a small room within the building that is noted as concession. That room exists as a, I call it a flex room. It does have a roll-up window the outside. It does have a counter. It is not equipped nor envisioned by the district to be serving as a formal concession hot food. There's no preparation for hot food there or measures put in place in association with that. But this would be something that might serve the purpose of, that's satisfied by, you know, loose tables and chairs that are set up around the track at events where pamphlets are handed out or chips are, are given out to people, and that's the extent of the concession. When the project was originally conceptualized back in 2017, there was talk at that time of a more broader concession use, but that faded as the restrooms and the water became really the primary functions. This building also got much smaller from the original concept that was shown. So at the high school, this is the, uh, I don't know if you know the high school, but this is the existing fitness center. The tennis courts sit right over here. This is an existing one-story portion of the high school that will remain. And the green shaded area here is the stair and elevator associated with the new second floor. So the, uh, the fitness center itself is being divided into a series of spaces so that the district can provide the, uh, physical education space that they need. So there is a space here that will be more oriented towards dance and aerobics. And there is a space upstairs, which would be oriented towards wrestling, fencing, and other uses. This is the second-story addition, four classrooms here. And a teacher space, teacher-staff common workroom space. And then corridor connection into the existing building, and on the other end corridor connection to that stair and elevator addition, which expands the footprint. And, um, that is the extent of the addition at the high school. The, the larger project originally conceptualized several courtyard infills and things of that nature, none of those are part of this project.
Scott, can you go back, I'm sorry, before we leave this, can you mark this, can we mark this, Mr. Mower, virtually, I guess, A2?
Yes, yeah, thanks, good.
Thank you. And Scott, can you go back to A1, and we have to talk about whether the location, size, and character of the proposal is in harmony with the appropriately, appropriate and orderly development of the district? And looking at the aerial, given the minimal size, I'm sorry, the existing school. Facilities that are located on the property, and they're, and they, and everything else that surrounds the property, and the minimal size of the improvements, would you say that there, that the proposal is in harmony with the district and the existing facilities?
I would, in fact, the approach here was intentional in trying to minimize the impact on the existing building by adding the second story over top of the one-story wing that was there.
And if I read Mr. Le Plises, or Lesko's, uh, report, it looks like there's only about thirteen hundred plus square feet of new impervious service, service.
That's correct.
And as far, and Jim, as far as the impact on the environment, would you say that this adversely affects the impact on the environment?
I would say it doesn't, I believe it's, it's consistent with general design and planning standards and, and, and it's not an adverse impact.
And the DRCC approval would sort of echo that?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. And can you speak to access to the facilities by police and fire?
Scott touched on it before, that there is an access road that extends from the loop road up at the front of, of the high school that goes all the way back to the parking lot and Walnut Avenue, so there's access from two directions. Plus, there's an open field, you know, around. The one side of, of the restroom, so there's, there's paved access to pretty much all of the proposed facilities that are, that are going in. And then, so we see no issue why there would not be able for emergency vehicles to access either of the facilities.
And, and Scott, as far as, um, impact on traffic or additional schoolchildren, was the intent of this to expand or provide for additional students at the facility?
No, the intent behind this was to better provide for the students that are at the facility already. The students now are in classrooms that are smaller than ideal for the class sizes. This is a fairly minimal effort of providing four additional classrooms to try to relieve that pressure. Within the physical education space, the fitness space, uh, spaces that are being created are to provide a function that is already in place at the school, but currently requires, you know, moving of things in and out of spaces that are used for multiple uses, which reduces the amount of programming that can occur for those sports and those physical activities. So this will allow better scheduling of the same functions that are underway currently.
Thanks. Mr. Mower, matter of chair, I have no further questions, if the board has any questions.
Do members of the board have questions? Since we're in screen sharing mode, I can't see if folks are raising their hands.
I'm raising my hand, Louis.
Ah, hi, David. Please go ahead.
Just a couple of quick questions. The news. An elevator is, I assume, by an exit from the building, well, that also serves as an entry, a point of entry, will people be coming into the building there? Say, on weekends to use the weight room or other sorts of uses?
It's not envisioned for that use, per se. It is in place, as you mentioned, for an exit from the new second floor that's being created. That said, the district does provide, you know, weekend and after-hour uses of its building for many purposes. I could imagine that it could possibly be used that way, but there's no formal planning in that direction right now.
Okay. And I guess the, the other question is just to reiterate the question that was asked in the planning report, I guess there were two questions. One is, you know, how you utilize additional classroom space without additional teachers? And, and whether there is actually an anticipation of some additional staff that would be teaching out of these classrooms?
Matt, do you want to answer that?
Yeah, um, yeah, if you could raise your right hand, did I swear? You did not swear me in.
Okay.
Very good catch.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So I swear or affirm, please state your phone name and spell your last name.
Matt Bolden, B as in boy, O U L D I N. I'm the school business administrator here for the Prince Public Schools.
Welcome, Mr. Bolden, go right ahead.
Thank you. So in answer to that question, uh, it's not the, uh, the underlying intention, uh, the, the classroom space, uh, Mr. Downey. It's a collaborative space, so there's roll-up doors, so it could be used as a larger area. You know, we, as, as attendance grows at the high school, of course, we will, uh, need to add teachers, but, uh, that's not the intention for this, this space. It's, it's more of a modern collaborative space with the high school. Nineteen twenty-seven? Or nineteen twenty, I can't remember. But it's, it's a hundred years old approximately, so the space isn't necessarily perfect for, uh, modern teaching methods. So this is more of a collaborative space, which will help.
We've had a request to, um, discontinue the screen sharing, so that
Sure.
can go to gallery view. And Councilwoman Sachs has a question?
Yes, um, it's for Scott Downey, hi, Scott, nice to see you again. So, um, you know, the flooding has been such a problem for a very long time, as you know. And has been really expensive to remediate, and I just, I know there have been solutions that have been attempted a number of times, and I'm really looking forward to this being the, the final. That, that it will be resolved once and for all, and I'm wondering if you could reassure us on that, on that in that area?
Well, um, I'm not, I'm not sure I can reassure you that there won't ever be more rain than we are currently seeing. But that said, the intention here is, yes, this is a solution that will rectify this problem. You know, in the past, all the drainage on this site went to that small retention basin that we showed you next to the music rooms in, in that niche in the building, if you will. Which was, you know, arguably undersized, given the current flows and not able to handle them. So, uh, this basin will now intercede, and, and as Jim mentioned, hopefully mitigate some of that water flow before it reaches that point. And that's the, uh, that's the intention behind it, is to solve that problem.
Yeah, Scott, I should add, I mean, the, the basin's there to help mitigate the problem and contain some floodwaters. It's certainly not going to solve it forever, um, or, or permanently. The intent is to kind of reduce the frequency of flooding. And we're trying to do whatever we can within this property to, you know, store as much water we can from, from our site. But the, the, the larger storm events, twenty-five years, fifty years, a hundred years, could potentially still have a problem there. We're just trying to reduce the, as much as we can, the, the frequency of, of events. But it's certainly not a hundred percent solution, but it should help reduce the frequency it, it occurs.
I think I noticed that you're, just a sec, Mr. Quinn, you'll be next. I think I noticed that you're deepening that, um, basin. And adding to its capacity. But I didn't see whether or not you're changing the footprint at all, are you making it bigger and deeper? And are you adding vegetation so that it will absorb more water? Can you talk a little bit about that?
The footprint is getting slightly wider as far as, you know, length and width. We're, we're constrained by the area which we have for the basin between the parking lot and the playing field. We are going deeper, we're going about two feet deeper. We did, uh, soil logs and borings to, you know, measure where the groundwater table is, so afford us the ability to go a couple feet deeper. Plus with the topography, and having to still have to drain to the basin that's downstream from us, we are able to manage to go up two feet deeper to give us that additional storage volume. The, the intent right now is still to put it back within, with grass covered, as it was before. If, if there was a desire for vegetation in the future, I mean, that could be explored. But in the, in the short-term impact of, of, of a rain event, any sort of like, any vegetation in there really not going to have much of an impact with reducing the amount of water that's flowing through the system. If it was more of an infiltration basin with a, like a standing water or permanent water, uh, surface, additional vegetation would help to that effect. But not in a detention-based design where it's not holding any retaining water, only temporarily that, you know, the less, the more storage volume we have in it, the better, we feel.
Could I, could I just follow up, please, just on my question, just very quickly? I mean, it didn't sound tremendously reassuring to, to say our intention is, and hopefully and, you know, it's such a problem, is there it may, obviously, it's not possible in the short term, but can you speak to what would really be a, a comprehensive solution that you could that, that could be implemented down the road in which we could, there would be a bit more reassurance?
Well, there's a couple pipes, it's mostly, the problem is the Westminster site and the storm source network that traverses it and accepts all the flow from the high school property and upstream drainage properties. What we found as part of a, a, a early-stage study was it's not the flow from the high school that's causing the problem, it's just the surrounding, uh, regional area that's all draining to that low-point Walnut. And right, and right now, there's only like two small, like twelve-inch parallel pipes that cross Walnut and then connect to the storm source system that's in, that passes through the Westminster property. So there's basically a bottleneck there, there's too much water going through, you know, too small a pipe network. So what would really need to happen is that whole system upgraded to allow more conveyance through there to, you know, keep it from, um, you know, from the water building up within the roadway. Alternatively, it's provide more storage on the high school property. And this is the, you know, the, the, this area where we found out it was feasible to provide more storage on the high school property. There really isn't any more room with the way that the, the site's developed. From a, a cost perspective and a feasibility, feasible perspective as far as, you know, putting in more storage to where we can, you know, retain as much water as we can, but allow it to slowly release through the Westminster tract. So, yeah, the, the, the answer really is studying the whole pipe network through Westminster and making the pipes bigger. But to do that is tough, because then you have to keep going downstream and making sure you're not creating any flood issues further downstream before you get to a, a stream or water course.
Okay, and, and those pipes are, is that a municipal responsibility or a Westminster thing?
I believe the pipe network in Westminster is privately owned, and I obviously, the pipes within Walnut would be municipal.
Okay, great, thank.
Mr. Quinn?
So I, I just wanted to echo what, uh, Councilwoman Sachs said. I think we're on the third or fourth stage in the High School Performing Arts Center as a result of the deficiencies of this design, so I if you can sharpen your pencils, any, for a better outcome. And did I hear correctly that the area that is between the parking lot there and where the side of the Performing Arts Center is, that area where there's a lot of vegetation is just going to become a, a grass berm? Did I miss?
No, that, that basin between the parking lot and the Performing Arts Center, whereas their existing basin is not being touched, that's.
Oh, okay, thank you.
That is, that is well-vegetated, I believe, I was told at one point it was, uh, somebody actually, this part of some sort of environmental class, they put in in there to help with the ecological goal, you know.
Yeah, my, my concern was, was pedagogical in asking that question, so I'm relieved at the answer. But please, I mean, four stages in, in however many years the PAC has been open. And it's not an inexpensive fix, so either we need, and also with due respect, you talked about fifty and twenty-five-year storms. We've had five of those in the past ten years, so anything that can be done, it would be a good, that would be in the best interest of taxpayers. Thank you.
With, with a hundred-year storm thrown in for good measure, I think. And I wonder, too, not to belabor this too much, but adding pipe, you know, adding bigger pipes is just going to deliver more water faster to, to some point, as, as, you know, I think you noted with talking about downstream flooding potential, and I just wonder whether you know, addressing upstream issues with distributed, small-scale green infrastructure that interrupts, that retains more and absorbs more water uphill, so that a lot less of it gets to this low point. But that, I guess, from what you're saying, is a Westminster issue? What's the, what's the overall drainage area that goes, that comes to this site, do you know?
I don't have the area off the top of my head, but it's, I don't even know the names of the road network, but it's everything from the south and east of the site, uh, it's a pretty significant area, it's over, it's about, you know, two, three hundred acres. Mostly, mostly developed. And then, just, and also, I don't know if it was clear before, the, the, all the runoff from the high school property is being managed by, for, by, for, uh, for a hundred-year storm by these two basins. What's, what's happening is, once you have these high-intensity storms, the water's actually backing up into that lower basin and causing it to overflow over Walnut, then into Westminster, that's where you get the, the flooding, because the pipes through Westminster simply can't handle the, the capacity, that's why it's backing up and overflowing.
I see.
So, yeah, it would require like a, a regional analysis, you, you, number one is you need area, you need land, you know, you need land to put these storm management measures in unless you go underground, which is sometimes cost prohibitive, and then you have other utilities to deal with, so. It's a problem, um, yes, and then it's, it's hard to upstream things, I mean, upsize things downstream, because you're just kind of conveying the problem further downstream, and it requires more of an analysis until you get to a, you know, tidal waterway or something where capacity doesn't matter anymore.
Are there other, Mr. O'Donnell, you have a question?
Yes, I do, I'd like to ask a question about the, uh, the storage facility in the bathroom, the bathrooms. Can you just, uh, I guess this is for Scott and, and Jim. Walk us through a little bit of the, uh, site selection for that, that facility, that building. It's kind of wedged in the corner there, and it's on the opposite side of the grandstand where people will be during events. So I was just wondering a little bit about that.
So the location is given to a couple of things. Number one, as I mentioned, there is an existing structure, uh, essentially next to it, there's a shed that's out there now that's related to the irrigation system. The ramp that wraps around this building is effectively in place already. We're improving it as part of this, but this, uh, this niche, if you will, was just kind of an area that was, uh, was, there wasn't anything happening there, it was grass and dirt. So as a location, it was fitting, um, to provide access from two directions, one from the stadium side, but also from the other fields on the high school property. So it is a central location, so that all the kids that are, um, out there doing activities would have easy access to bath. would have easy access to bathrooms and water. There were locations that were looked at that were closer to the stadium at the beginning of this process. There were substantial objections from the neighbors that were heard by the school district and that led us to look at other locations. And in the end, the centralized nature of this location was actually favored because of the access that it provides.
Excellent, because I know at some point, somebody's going to say, why did they put it there? But the, and the other question that I had is regarding the bathrooms. Are those going to be public restrooms that are open for, you know, there are many people who use the track facility on the weekends and whatnot for walking or when, or will they only be open during events?
Matt, do you want to address that?
I'm not sure if we've finalized that. I would imagine that, I know that PFC rents the fields quite often, other outside organizations that they would be open on the weekends. But I'm not sure that's been 100% finalized yet. But I would imagine that would be the case.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chow?
Just a quick question about, for the addition, the second-floor addition to the building is, how is the cooling and heating load being met? Are there any additional like rooftop units that might make noise that would affect the neighbors nearby?
So there are rooftop units in place right now on that building, both on the one-story adjacent and on the fitness center. There are rooftop units being added for the second-story addition. But the addition is receiving a sloped roof and the rooftop units are on the opposite sides of that sloped roof from the neighbors. So the intention being to screen them visually and visually.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? Mr. Cohen, are there members of the public who would like to?
Why don't you invite them?
If there are, I shall. If there are members of the public attending who would like to speak to the board about this, please raise your hand.
Okay, we have, the first is Cynthia Hill. Going to bring her in as a panelist. Cynthia, just to warn you, you will be kicked out momentarily and then brought in.
Ms. Hill, you are muted. If you can unmute yourself and activate your camera.
I don't know if I can make my camera work, but I believe you can hear me at this point, is that correct?
We can, with an echo, at least I'm hearing an echo.
If you toggle the bottom of the screen, on the left side is a icon of a video camera. Is there a slash through it? And if you hit it, would that unslash it and your image will then appear? No, I guess not.
I think I have my webcam turned off completely for, for privacy reasons and so I don't particularly want to fix it, so.
Understood, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry about that.
I'm going to swear you in, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I affirm.
Okay, if you can state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Cynthia Hill, H-I-L-L.
Thank you, go right ahead.
I live, I'm going to take care of this echo first, hold on. Oh, can you hear me still?
Yes.
Okay, good, all right. So, so I have a controlling interest in the property at 249 Moore Street. And I was very interested in the discussion regarding drainage because I have a drainage problem in that house. And that drainage problem has increased since the turf was put in at the high school. So the main reason that I wanted to be here for this meeting is to investigate and understand a little bit better the problems with drainage at the high school and what you will be doing about it. I find the reports that are online regarding the drainage rather, well, they're not really comprehensible in a way. I don't quite understand when they're, why they're saying there's less impervious surface when it's obvious that there's less drainage into the groundwater table and into the aquifer. But, so I don't really understand those reports very well. But what I do understand is that, you know, the more impervious surface we have, the more runoff we have and we already have a huge problem. I'm really very pleased with the plan, to tell you the truth, that you're building up and not out. There's, I think you've solved the problem of needing classrooms, given the space as well as can possibly be done. I remain very concerned about the drainage because despite the fact that you talked about the drainage going over into Westminster, I can assure you there's a whole lot of drainage from the high school going into the basement of the house at 249 Moore Street. If you, if you don't believe me, you can just drive by and you will see the sump pump working 24 hours a day. Every, depending on what kind of a sump pump I have in there, it goes every few minutes. So in future planning and in working with the engineers and the consultants for this project, I would, I would encourage you to look not only at the drainage problem at the high school, which I was unaware of, but also to take into consideration water flowing the other way towards Main Street from the high school. And that's all I have to say.
You meant toward Moore Street from the high school? I assume?
I can't, I can't actually hear you. I had, I'm sorry, I have never done Zoom before, so.
I, can you hear me now?
I'm afraid that any, any future discussion is probably going to have to be done privately after the meeting.
Okay, well, I, I just wanted to make sure that the record reflected. I think she meant to say drainage toward Moore Street, not toward Main Street. And I just, you know, for the sake of the record, wanted to clarify that.
I'm sorry, could?
Oops. I think that's correct.
Yeah. Mr. Cohen, are there others that would like to?
Yes, next is Karen Lemon.
Hi, if you, if you could raise your, is she in or out now?
She's in.
I'm in.
Welcome, Ms. Lemon, Mr. Mueller is going to swear you in.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I affirm.
Okay, if you can state your full name and spell your last name.
Yes, Karen Lemon, and it's L-E-M-O-N.
Thank you.
So my question is, first I want to say thanks to Mr. Chow about addressing the noise question for the addition of the second story. I just would like some feedback on, though also will be a lot of light that comes out and into our homes when that second story goes up. And so I just want to understand what consideration is being taken for either putting, I don't know, some trees in between our homes or for making sure that in the evenings we don't have a beacon behind our homes. Thank you.
So between the addition and the nearest neighbors, and I'm not sure exactly where you, where you reside.
I'm at 185 Moore, so I'm directly behind the addition.
Okay, so there are some fairly mature trees along the, the corner fence line there by the high school. The addition sits in part behind them. Obviously, all the windows will have shades that can be closed. Given that these are, you know, general classrooms, I would anticipate the majority of the usage to be during the day. There are no exterior lights which would chine out that are being added in any way. The only lights on the exterior being added are at the exit doors for egress purposes.
Okay, on the trees between our property and yours, there actually aren't any on the school's property between 185 Moore and the school. And so if consideration could be given once the construction is done. There were trees before, it was either Irene or Sandy. We lost those trees on the school property at that time and the barrier was never put back up. So some consideration could be put in place to replace that, particularly given the new size of the school, it would be appreciated.
We noted.
Thank you.
And the last person with their hand up is Inglea Kostenbader.
I unmute myself and, but I don't, I have my video on, but, there, one second.
Yeah, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about, about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, if you could state your full name and spell your last name.
Inglea Kostenbader and last name is K-O-S-T-E-N-B-A-D-E-R.
Thank you.
I live next door to Cynthia Hill at 245 Moore Street. And I, I second what she's saying about the problem from the high school and especially after the turf was put in. I've gone through many storms and through many discussions with the high school regarding this. But what I've noticed is that, I think under the high school and also part of Moore Street is an underground stream that goes there. So many times when I go out in the storms, I see this storm drains from the high school are not actually full, but it still comes into our properties. So only God knows where that water is coming, it's probably from the stream underneath. But I, I think that if they, if the high school could look into the storms, I mean, the drains, especially if you're going to have the, I don't know if that's going to be a foundation on the, on the concession stand bathroom. If they're going to dig down, it's going to push away a lot of the water that is flowing. And also during these storms is in front of the concession stands that you test, you want to put it, it's like a half a meter of water standing every water storm. I don't know if this has been recorded ever at the, at the school. But it's, it's, that's a low point on the field, PHS field. So I just wanted everyone to be aware of it because I'm sure not all of you are out there in storms, but I have been. So I, I would highly, highly appreciate if someone could look into it. My backyard, I don't have a basement as Cynthia has, so I, I thank the Lord that I don't have the problem with the sump pump going 365 days a year. But I have a backyard that becomes a total lake when the storms are happening, which tells me that it's not really underground, it's coming from up above. And I'm right behind the, the press box that is at the field. So yes, I would highly, highly recommend to look into the storm drains and how the water is moving around in our storms. Thank you for listening to me.
Taking notes.
And, Madam Chair, we do have.
You are also on the flood and stormwater committee, are taking notes as well.
Excellent.
Yeah. We do have one more person with their hand raised, Eddie Brady.
Hi, I'm going to join you just through audio and not video. My name's Eddie Brady, I live on, on Moore Street near the athletic field.
If you could raise your right hand.
I can.
You swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do affirm, yes.
Okay, if you could please state, well, you already stated your name and that's B-R-A-D-Y.
That's correct, yes, thank you. I just wanted to make one comment about the proposed restroom storage concession building. I've, over the last year and a half, I've attended a number of board meetings and facility committee meetings. And it was always described as such, restroom concession storage building. Over the last couple of months, my attendance has sort of fallen off. This is the first time that I've heard that the concession component of that building has been dropped. And I do want you to know that, you know, those three components of that building, they were in the referendum, they were approved by the voters. And there are probably going to be voters who are going to press the Board of Ed to follow through and install the concessions then. So for the, you know, the purpose of the planning board and the hearing tonight, I just want you all to be cognizant of that fact that there may be a concession component to that new outbuilding. That's all.
Louise, can I just ask a question, please? Okay, I believe that, Mr. Bolden, you said that there, there may be a concession, not a, just not a hot food concession. You know, they may be selling chips or water or whatever during the, during events, is that correct?
Mr. Downey was describing the concession area. It is still a small concessionary with the roll-up window. There is a sink in there, so it would be viewed as a very, you know, light concession area for football games. So it has not been taken out of the project, I think it's Scott describing. So I wasn't here, I've been here just over a year. How Scott was describing, our architect, how it was defocused and desculped, really the whole magnitude of the project was, is much smaller than originally, including that, that facility.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, Inglea Kostenbader has her hand up again. Do we want to give her another opportunity to speak or?
Yes, just quickly.
You're muted.
You have to unmute yourself.
Sorry. One more point about the concession stand is that we have a lot of activity on the field behind our houses. And my, my worry is that the concession stand will be another reason for kids, public or whatever, to hang out on the field. And then, yeah, how is it going to be controlled with, are there going to be automatic closed doors? Somebody going to go there and close it at night? And then another question is the cleaning. Who's, it's going to be a lot of added chores for the school to, to having this, the bathrooms and whatnot. They, it's hard even to keep up with all the garbage that's happening dropped on the bleachers today. So I'm just wondering if there's a plan for this. We're hoping there's a plan for this.
Yes, there is an added, some added responsibility with our custodial staff. We plan to have remote locks and, you know, we're not going to leave it open past. We plan to have remote locks, and you know, we're not gonna leave it open past, you know, games or anything like that.
Can it also, we were part of asking you guys to have cameras, which I thought was fantastic that you put up. Can that be put up on this location as well?
Yeah, we have been talking about that, that's all, it's gonna be, yes, that will be, that will happen.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else, Mr. Cohen? Any other questions from the board? Can you all hear me reasonably well, because?
Yes.
Now we can, there was an issue before, Louise.
Yeah. Madam Chair, perhaps you'd, perhaps you'd like to close the public comments section?
I will, thank you. I will do that with my pair of scissors that shall serve as a gavel. Of closing the public hearing meeting of the, excuse me, the public portion of the meeting. Are there other questions or any other discussion that board members want to have?
Yeah, so this is a little bit of a broader question, which I know that this isn't like within the kind of scope of the tonight's hearing, but sort of related, because you know, at least the building portions are gonna be using energy. And I was wondering, because I was looking at that map of the school, if there's any plans to put solar on the rooftop of, of the high school. Seems like there's a lot of good surface area there, and so I was just curious.
There is not any, not any solar as part of this project. Obviously, the work being done, systems being put in place are, are energy efficiency focused. The district is making other energy efficiency upgrades, and has talked about the possibility of solar in the future or at some other time, but not part of this project.
Okay, but you know, as far as, actually, I guess what you just mentioned, these new additions or the new concession stand and the addition will be, I guess, incorporated into, well, the extension will be incorporated into the existing energy load. I'm assuming it's, you know, not going to change too much. But I guess, you know, everything is gonna be as energy efficient as possible. Good insulation, you know, is there, is there any thought in terms of, you know, energy efficiency in regards to those expansion projects?
Well, there is. The impact on these additions is relatively small, because they are relatively small themselves. The district, however, is undertaking broader improvements, replacing lighting, and doing other energy efficiency upgrades currently, not just at the high school, but at other buildings as well. So they are focused on that district wide.
All right.
That's good to hear. Are these structures gonna be, well, the concession stand I know is small, and so is the second floor addition, but will they be considered solar ready? Will they be built in a way where they could accommodate solar panels down the road if that were?
Well, I would say that the, the high school itself could, could certainly receive solar in a number of different ways. Obviously, the rooftops were mentioned, parking canopies or things like that might be able to be considered. The concession building is a relatively small footprint, so putting solar on the roof would, would probably be relatively pointless. But the, the addition as part of the high school could certainly be considered in the future, yeah.
Other, other questions from Mr. Oakman? Did you have something?
Yeah.
Screen lit up, so I assumed you were clearing your throat or something.
No, I think, I think that you heard my son getting in the shower. But I, I do have a sort of a pedantic, you know, comment to make to semi-correct the record. I just wanted to say, a couple of the, you know, public commenters, you know, said, you know, spoke, spoke to how the, you know, the, the classroom problem had been solved at the high school. And I think, I, I just think it's worth noting that, that, you know, I don't think anyone's representing that this project solves the need for classroom space at the high school. I think, you know, Mr. Downey actually said the opposite, which is that this was a small piece of what was being considered as part of the original high school upgrades, the referendum. And I just, I just wanted to say that, sort of as we're thinking about water runoff, as we're thinking about some of these issues that, you know, just, just to remind people that we're not necessarily declaring victory on the, the space needs of the high school.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Mr. La Place, is there action that the board is being asked to take this evening?
Yes, the board should vote on granting conditional use approval, that they, they, you know, affirm that this, this proposal is in keeping with the conditional use requirements of the zone. Jerry, are there any other actions that need to be taken?
That's it, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to move conditional approval. For the second.
Oh, sorry.
Conditional approval, or is it approval of a conditional use?
Approval of a conditional use. Thank you, Louise. I knew that was not quite right, but I
We know what you meant.
Thank you. Good.
Louise polished up a bit.
That's been moved and seconded. Are there any quick comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think we need a roll call.
Oh, do we? Okay, excuse me. Justin, can you give us a roll call? Are you still here, Justin? I'm not seeing.
I'm here.
There you are.
Yeah, didn't get rid of me yet.
Just in case you're wondering, Justin and I never leave this building. Our cots are out back.
Go right ahead, Justin, thanks.
Ms. Julie Capazoli, David Cohen.
Yes.
Alvin McGowan.
Yes.
Jeffrey Oakman.
Yes.
Owen O'Donnell.
Yes.
Tim Quinn.
Yes.
Mia Sax.
Yes.
Deenan Tekzarni.
Yes.
Luis Wilson.
Yes.
And Phil Chow.
I'm an alternate, so.
Okay, not on this one.
But Julie's not here, so I think you can vote.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, yes, then.
And Wanda Gunning.
I just wanted to clarify in the record, Mr. Chow, you did arrive before this particular discussion, is that correct?
Yes, I did.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chow's been here all along. Okay, um, next up is a discussion of preliminary
Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. Excuse me, I'm sorry, I should have thanked you all from the board and your professionals. Thanks very much for coming. Thanks for your presentation. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah, and on behalf of the staff, I want to thank all the, the team of the Board of Education for working with us so well. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to just add that Matt Bolden is doing a fantastic job, and any doubts we have are, are, are overcome by, by your being on the job, so, thank you, Matt.
Wow, that's great to hear.
We're working hard, and thanks for getting this meeting, special meeting together so quickly.
Okay.
Have a nice weekend, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everybody.
Good night. Okay. Onto our discussion of the preliminary investigation of property for non-condemnation redevelopment area, Franklin Avenue, block 21.04, lots 2, 26, and 27.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. McGowan.
I have a question as to whether I can participate in this.
Thanks for asking. Mr. Mueller, what do you, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. McGowan, is that just a simple question?
That, that, that's it. I am actually no longer a member of the Housing Authority, but I mean, I've already, but I, even so, I've still had a lot of involvement in this already. So I still think that's, it's, it's an issue.
Yeah, I, I think it would be best not to participate.
Well, we'll miss your expertise. So, so do you now, then, Mr. Cohen, do you change Mr. McGowan from a participant, participant to an attendee so that he can observe, or what's the right protocol?
Yeah, either that, or he could leave if he wanted to, but I'm happy to change.
What do you put for Mr. McGowan? It's up to you.
Well.
Or Mr. Mueller, if you want to weigh in about what's, what you think is the right.
I don't think you really have to, you know, if he was, if this was an in-person meeting, he would go off the dais and either leave or sit in the audience, but since it's virtual, I think, I think it's all right to leave it the way it is. Although moving, moving him to attendee, I think would be better, to be honest.
Okay, so your choice is
We'll move him over. Oh, he can move me over.
And then you can leave whenever you want, and we won't
There you go.
Move me, too.
You are, you don't get off the hook.
You should be so lucky, Michael.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, well, since, since you spoke up, Mr. La Place, I'm gonna punt to you to, to get us started. And I'm sure Mr. Cohen and Ms. Sax will have plenty to say as well.
Thank you, Acting Chair Wilson, I appreciate that. I'll get this started. On July 27th of this year, the municipal council by resolution directed and authorized the planning board to conduct a preliminary study to determine whether the, what's locally known as the Franklin Maple Site, which is an affordable housing project site and a component of our fair share housing plan, to see if it would meet the criteria for designation as a non-condemnation redevelopment area. It's basically the idea there, and I'm sure the council members that are on the board will expand on this. But one of the purposes is certainly to give maximum creativity and flexibility in terms of design, and try to accomplish the greatest outcome on that site, because there's a lot of different goals and objectives we're trying to meet in addition to just providing affordable housing as part of our fair share plan. So as you may recall, the planning board had recently adopted two ordinances that affect this project site. It's, as I said, it's known as the Franklin Maple Site. It's 1-10 Franklin Avenue. It's on Franklin Avenue across from Avalon Bay, the former Princeton Hospital site. It is located east of Witherspoon Street, and it's west of the properties on the west side of Jefferson Road. I'm sorry if that made that more confusing than I had to. But just to give you an idea, it's also north of the Princeton Cemetery. So it's an interesting site. Right now, it's a somewhat deteriorated surface parking lot for about two-thirds of it. Two lots, two lots are owned by the municipality, and then the corner lot, which is Lot 2, is owned by the Princeton Housing Authority, and that, there's existing housing there, dating from, I believe, the 1930s. So it's a very interesting site, and the redevelopment plan would give us the ability to really study it in detail and, and see if we could set up a mechanism to really do some great planning there and be as creative as possible. Just other things that I wanted to point out from the staff observation. The site is obviously centrally located. These were some of the findings that the planning board made when it found the two new ordinances, the two new zone designations for this site in compliance with the master plan. It was pointed out that the site is very centrally located within Princeton. It's well-served by transit. It's within walking distance of established neighborhoods and even the central business district. It's close to the municipal complex and other public and private institutions. So it's a, it's a really prime site within our community. So having said that, I don't know whether our council president, David Cohen, wants to start, take the discussion over, and perhaps Mia would like to join us.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say a couple of words that one of the virtues of the redevelopment statute in the state is that it actually gives the municipality a bit more control over the design. So Michael talked about the creativity that's enabled on the site, but we're also really interested, because there's so much public engagement in making this a process where the municipality can have a little bit more control, can shape what is going to happen on the property. So that's another, another benefit if it should be deemed in need of redevelopment. I know this board has heard other studies of area in need within the last year or two. A few of you may not have heard them. So you know, there are like nine or 10 criteria. You have to meet one or two of them, depending on which criteria you're meeting, to actually qualify. So clearly, we have to go through that study before we can actually designate it. But that's, that's what we're asking the planning board to go ahead and, and begin the process on.
Yeah, and I just wanted to quickly clarify why it's a non-condemnation redevelopment, why we're interested in doing it that way, because the site is already controlled, for the most part, by the municipality, along with a very open and willing neighbor, partner, the Princeton Housing Authority. So there's no need to take the land. The land is already in play, so to speak.
Ms. Sax, anything to add?
No, no, I think, you know, it's, it's worth having the investigation and seeing whether it qualifies. And if it in fact qualifies, then the planner who does the investigation will describe to us why, why it meets those criteria. And I, I think it's, it looks very likely to meet those criteria, but we can't know until we designate someone to do the investigation, and that's what we're asking for tonight.
Yeah, so the, the, I'm sorry, Mr. Tekzarni, go ahead.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, too. Just to clarify, are we looking to deem it as an area of redevelopment or an area of need of rehabilitation?
My understanding is that the planning board is, is acting to accept the direction from the council to undertake an investigation, to do the study.
So the, the consultant would determine whether it should be rehabilitation or redevelopment?
Correct. That would commence the work to be done, to choose this consultant, have the work done, and report back to the municipal.
Right.
I mean, I think what's envisioned is non-condemnation redevelopment area, because I, I think that does give more flexibility, more, I don't know, authority on the municipal side for
Control is the word you're looking for.
Thank you, that's a very good one. Yeah.
Deenan, it's a good question, because rehab is something that came up over the weekend as at the Witherspoon-Jackson Gathering as, as a recommendation for that neighborhood. And I, I myself am not clear about the difference between redeveloped, non-condemnation redevelopment and rehabilitation.
I don't think there is any, to tell you the truth, and the standard, the standards for area in need of rehabilitation are much, much lighter than they are for area in need of redevelopment.
Right, that's, I think that's, you know, potentially why we would, or someone would want to go that route, because I think that, yeah, I, I think it might be easier to, to adopt. But I, I don't know if like, you know, you, you have any difference in terms of like, you know, being able to prescribe certain design guidelines and stuff like that. Maybe Michael can speak to that better.
Well, we have a lot, yeah, we have actually a lot of latitude in terms of setting design guidelines under the redevelopment law. And I was just gonna add that this is sort of your classic redevelopment site, where you've got a former surface parking lot for a use that's no longer in town, and it's, it's in pretty bad shape physically. And in addition to that, another portion of the project site is older housing that is definitely in need of, you know, either renovation or replacement. It's just, it's lived, it's kind of run the course of its life. So there's a lot, I can just see, I can just foresee a lot of good, solid reasons for making the argument for this being a redevelopment site.
Will the planning board designate the planner that undertakes, or the team that undertakes this study? Is that part of what we are being asked to do tonight?
I think we're, by my understanding, is that we're the I think we're, we're, by my understanding is that we're the, the council is asking the planning board, and this is how it's supposed to, to process, is that the council asks the planning board to request the investigation, not the, the planner, not, not the, the individual who performs the investigation. Is that correct, Michael?
Yeah, that's correct, because the, the investigation is a land use investigation. So that's why it's, the council's directing the planning board.
Right, but the council will, will determine who is the consultant or in-house team, whatever, whoever are the people that will actually do the study?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
I believe the preliminary report will be back to the planning board and then to the council.
Yeah. And the timeframe anticipated for that? I'm sorry, if it's in, if it's in the resolution, I did not see it.
I didn't see it in the resolution. I don't know if the council members are aware or?
I think the minimum is six weeks and that's about what we're hoping for.
Okay. So as soon as possible.
Yes.
And I, I gather from the comments that this is going to be done by an outside consultant and not in-house?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And just for, for our edification, do you know, and I think we might have talked about this in executive committee, so I'm sorry, I'm just not remembering, the, how quickly council envisions appointing the consultant? I mean, that this would be happening in the next couple of weeks, I expect. Yeah.
We've already, already received a number of proposals.
Okay, great, right. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments that planning board members have? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. We're, we're being asked to take
Are we?
Action, I assume, to formally recommend to council that you undertake this preliminary investigation.
No, no, the, the planning board does the preliminary investigation.
I'm sorry.
I actually don't think.
We're doing that right now. We're, we're.
No, I mean, and the report will actually be a planning board report.
Right.
There'll be a meeting of the planning board, which adapts the report, and then there'll be a formal, formal public hearing on redevelopment and then a recommendation back to council.
Yeah, the council gave the direction to the planning board. The planning board has to accept the direction because it's a land use study.
And should we vote, should council members be voting on this?
Sure.
Okay.
So we need a.
What are we, what are we?
Exactly how a, or whether a.
To undertake a study.
I move that we undertake a study.
As directed by the council.
As directed by the council in their resolution 20-237, which directs us to do so.
Moved by Mr. Quinn, seconded by Mr. Tegzarni. If anyone dares to ask a question at this point?
I'm, I'm curious, like, why? If anybody was going to do it, it's going to.
You're not allowed to ask a question.
Where angels fear to tread.
Why didn't, I'm just curious why we didn't do this for the other, I mean, I guess then it was under affordable housing, but we didn't.
That was the, we did do that for.
We, we did do this for.
Same process and the planning board directed someone to do an investigation. Joe Burgess did the investigation. Came back to the planning board with a report, the, the planning board referred it to council.
Well, there was a hearing. I mean, the board had a hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I guess I forgot.
Ditto for the seminary.
That's understandable. It's been a very busy season for affordable housing actions taken.
We even, we even considered it for the shopping center site as well, but there was a determination that it was not all that likely to meet the criteria because the shopping center was operating.
Well, I, I, I don't think we should, I think, I don't, there was no determination on that. There were personal, differing personal opinions and then the clock ran out and it might still be revisited at some point. So I don't think we should say anything one way or another.
We are not going to go there right now. So we have a motion and a second. Any other, anything? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Do we need to call the roll on this or, no? Oh, it's a resolution, right. Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Seeing none, that's done. Thank you. I felt like I had skates on going through that one. I apologize for my confusion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay.
And thank you, everyone who stepped up and helped staff tonight. As always, we appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you all.
Justin, you have like a keg-like container of coffee at your desk, it looks like. My God, it has to be like 40 ounces. You drank from it. It was like Oktoberfest stein or something. Oh, it must have been the angle, sorry.
I think that was, I think that was water too.
Okay, good. Well, Michael said they stay there all the time, so I figured.
You'll notice, I believe it's branded Princeton, so he's.
Oh, is it? Really? Oh, look at that. Wow.
Gotta get the Rutgers running time.
Justin, not, not in this town.
I know this is still being recorded, so. But anything after.
On that, though, we can all be thinking of Oktoberfest.
Anything after a German. I just saw it look like it took two hands to.
Mr. Quinn, thank you for making that motion on the redevelopment. It certainly took a journalist to articulate.